Well hello there once again. You know, in spite of everything, a turbulent geopolitical environment, a federal government that's tearing itself to shreds, and a rent on my one-bedroom apartment going above $3,000 a month, we Canterbridgeans once again find ourselves on the verge of yet another city council election. So of course, I thought it'd be best to compile this little video here in order to help you and other curious voters across the city learn about some of the core issues facing the city. What has changed over these last few years? Who's running to earn your vote? And why you should or shouldn't vote for them? Let's start off with a brief explainer on how Cambridge's city government works, how elections work, and who the current leadership is. Municipal government in Cambridge is split into two core groups. One is the City Council, which is the nine-person legislative body elected to two-year terms, whose primary role is to draft and create all of the legislature, policy orders, and ordinances for the city. In short, these are the people who write the laws for Cambridge. Second is the City Manager, who is the chief executive and manages all of the major city departments, such as the Police Department, Public Works, Libraries, Parks, you get the idea. Or in other words, the City Manager and their staff are the people who enforce the laws for Cambridge. This type of governance is known as a Plan E government in Massachusetts, although the more common and general term for this is a Council Manager government. In this system, the city councillors are elected by the citizens of the city, and then the council itself decides on a city manager, meaning that the city manager is not directly elected by the citizens. Now, somewhat confusingly, Cambridge, like Lowell and Worcester, have also decided to complicate things further by also having a "Mayor." Here in Cambridge at least, the mayor is selected from one of the members of the city council, and the role is largely ceremonial, with no real additional power besides being the presiding officer for council meetings. Currently, the City Manager is Yi An Huang, who has been in the role since 2022. The current mayor of the city is sitting councillor Denise Simmons. And now that we know who runs the city, let's get a quick explainer on. In Cambridge, we elect our councils using a system known as ranked choice voting. In this system, when you go out to vote, you will rank your candidates in terms of your personal preference. For example, if I were voting on which was the best Neapolitan ice cream flavor, I would rank chocolate first, vanilla second, and strawberry third. The reason we do this is so that if the candidate we voted for in the election loses, our ballot can instead be moved to whoever our second choice was, in a way kind of simulating how the election would have gone if your first-choice candidate had never run. This process continues until nine candidates have either met a specific vote quota or there are only nine candidates left. I don't have time to cover the actual mathematics behind this, but if you're curious, check out the Election Commission's page here. Note also, that unlike our neighbors in Boston and Somerville, Cambridge elections are at-large. Or in other words, candidates are running for the votes of the entire city as a whole and not just those of a specific neighborhood. In 2023, the City of Cambridge elected the following people to City Council: Burhan Azim, Mark McGovern, Patty Nolan, Joan Pickett, Sumbul Siddiqui, Denise Simmons, Jevon Sabrina Wheeler, Paul Toner, and Ayesha Wilson. This remains unchanged today except for one major difference. On August 30th, 2024, councillor Joan Pickett died after a brief illness and was subsequently replaced by current councillor Catherine Zouzi. Out of the nine candidates, all are currently running for reelection except for Paul Toner, who had some... issues arise over the last year? That would have made his reelection bid extremely difficult. So there is one open seat available for a newcomer this year, which a lot of people have jumped on the opportunity to take. Who exactly are these people? I thought I'd do something a little different from 2023 and instead introduce the candidates first. I thought this would give better clarity on who's who when exploring the core issues. I'll make this part as objective and unbiased as possible, just a straightforward introduction to each of the candidates. My thoughts on each of them will probably become evident throughout the video, but there will be a dedicated section on my own feelings near the end. Now before we get to the candidates, it's probably best to go over the three major political organizations that have had significant influence over this year's election cycle. It'd be pretty difficult to have a conversation about Cambridge politics without mentioning these organizations, so it's best we cover them now. A Better Cambridge, or the ABC, advertises itself as an organization for the creation of more affordable housing, better tenant protections, and towards making living in Cambridge more accessible to all through political advocacy. Cambridge Bicycle Safety, or the CBS, has been the advocacy group for cyclists and cycling infrastructure in Cambridge, pushing for Cambridge to build a network of protected and separated bike lanes and develop policy that will make streets safer for cyclists and pedestrians. Both the ABC and CBS are single-issue organizations that are generally pretty laser-focused on advancing their policies, and as a result, don't tend to consider policy issues outside of those. The Cambridge Citizens Coalition, or the CCC, advertises itself as the organization pushing for sustainable development, preservation of historic architecture, and finding "common sense" approaches towards city policy. It often tends to represent the interests of both businesses and homeowners and frequently finds itself at odds with both A Better Cambridge and Cambridge Bicycle Safety. These three organizations have and continue to hold a rather large political sway in Cambridge and have endorsed many of the candidates we'll be talking about as they're hopefuls to win the election. And now, onto the candidates. Let's start off by quickly going through the candidates who I don't really think are contenders for this year's city council elections. Either they haven't been making a serious and coordinated effort to win, or they have had little to no financial or institutional support. There are three candidates running who I would put into this category. First is La Queen Battle, who is a local business owner in the healthcare field and whose campaign for city council has raised a grand total of $100 from herself and has no official website, with all official updates coming from her personal Facebook and Instagram pages. Their attention seems to be a lot more focused on her run for school committee? And while I wish them the best in that run, I think it's safe to say that Battle is not winning a city council seat in 2025. Second is Louise Venden, who is a former legislative aide and former select board member of Provincetown. She's running a write-in campaign. And third is Robert Winters, who, and let's do the Herculean task of ignoring everything he's ever said online, has no policy positions whatsoever on his website, has answered no questionnaires, and received no endorsements. And if we do decide to bring back everything he's ever said online, is viewed as a deeply hateful and bigoted man by many parts of the Cambridge electorate. Nobody wants to treat him seriously, and neither will I. On to the other candidates. Aya Alzubi is a Harvard graduate and local community organizer. She previously ran in the last election in 2023, coming in a very close 10th place behind Joan Pickett. She's been endorsed by Cambridge Bike Safety and the Democratic Socialists of America, as well as received endorsements from former councillor Quinton Zondervin, candidate for State House Evan McKay, and current State House representative Mike Connolly. Burhan Azim is an MIT graduate and former EMT and healthcare startup owner. He's currently a councillor, first being elected in 2021, and is now running for his third term. He's been endorsed by both Cambridge Bike Safety and A Better Cambridge. Elizabeth Bizio is a former nurse and currently the head of product at a pet care startup. She's had no runs for city council prior to this year and has an endorsement by the Cambridge Citizens Coalition. Dana Bullister is a data scientist and current chair of the Cambridge YWCA. This is her second run for city council, having previously ran in 2021, ending in 13th place. She has been endorsed by both Cambridge Bike Safety and A Better Cambridge. Timothy Flaherty is a current defence attorney and former professor of law at Boston College. This is his first run for city council, and he has been endorsed by no major local organizations. John Hanratty is a retired tech business owner. This is his second run for council, having previously run in 2023 and finished in 14th place. He has an endorsement from the Cambridge Citizens Coalition. Peter Hsu is a pediatric oncologist currently working at Beth Israel Deaconess and Harvard Medical School. This is his second run for council, having previously run in 2023 and finished in 23rd place. Which I should mention, if we choose to exclude perennial candidate Greg Murray, meant that Hsu ended 2023 in dead last. He's been endorsed by the Cambridge Citizens Coalition and has a weak endorsement from Cambridge Bike Safety. Mark McGovern is a former social worker and a current vice mayor of Cambridge. He was first elected to city council in 2013 and is now running for his seventh term. He has been endorsed by both Cambridge Bike Safety and A Better Cambridge. Ned Melanson is currently a public defender at Cambridge District Court. This is his first run for city council, and he's been endorsed by both Cambridge Bike Safety and A Better Cambridge. Patricia, or Patty Nolan, is a Harvard graduate, a former McKinsey consultant and startup founder, and a former school committee member. She is currently sitting on council, having been first elected in 2019, and is now running for her fourth term. This year, she has a weak endorsement from Cambridge Bike Safety. Stanislav, or Stan Rifkin, is currently pursuing a Masters of Public Administration at Harvard and works at the Harvard Graduate School of Education. This is his first run for city council, and he has earned a weak endorsement from Cambridge Bike Safety. Zion Sharon is a Cornell graduate. And that's about as much of his background I could find. Despite my research, I couldn't find Sharon's current employment. This is his first run for city council, and he has been endorsed by the Cambridge Citizens Coalition. Sumbul Siddiqui is a former local lawyer and was formerly the mayor of Cambridge. She's currently a member of the council, was first elected to city council in 2017, and is running for her fifth term. She has endorsements from Cambridge Bike Safety and A Better Cambridge. Denise Simmons is the current mayor of Cambridge. She was first elected to city council in 2001 and is currently running for her 13th term. She has been endorsed by A Better Cambridge. Jevon Sabrina Wheeler is a former coordinator at a local think tank and is current New England Progressive Governance Director at the Working Families Party. He's an incumbent council member, having first been elected in 2019, lost reelection in 2021, and then was re-elected again in 2023. He is running for his third term. He has been endorsed by Cambridge Bike Safety, A Better Cambridge, the Democratic Socialists of America, as well as State House representatives Mike Connolly and Erica Eiderhoven. Ayesha Wilson is a former teacher councillor at the Cambridge Housing Authority and a former school committee member. She's a current council member and was first elected in 2023. She is running for a second term. She has somehow managed to get endorsed by both A Better Cambridge and the Cambridge Citizens Coalition. Catherine, or Kathy Zouzi, is a former curator and former head of Magazine Beach Partners. She is a current council member, earning the seat by a recount after the death of Joan Pickett. She is running for her first full term. And that's all of them. These are the 17 candidates who I feel have a real chance to be your next members of the Cambridge City Council. But what do they stand for? What policies do they have? What is their take on... You know, despite all that's happened in the world over the last two years, it really does feel like some things never change. Two issues, housing and bike lanes, have dominated the conversation in the 2023 election. And would you know it, they're the dominant issues in this year's election as well. So of course, we'll do a brief surface-level overview of each topic, learn about where we started from and what happened over these last two years, and then show where each of the candidates stand on these particular issues. So without further ado, let's talk about housing. The housing affordability crisis has hit all of America hard, but here in Cambridge, it has hit us especially hard. When I made my 2023 video, I mentioned that the average price to buy a home in Cambridge was just shy of $975,000. Today, it's now an even more eye-watering $1.1 million, according to an aggregate of Zillow, Redfin, and Realtor. Even if I adjusted the 2023 value to $20.25, the 2025 price is still higher. Things aren't better on the rental front, with average rents now around $3,350 per month. So what has the city been doing about this, you might say? Well, the story has to begin in October 2020 with the passage of the 100% Affordable Housing Overlay, otherwise known as the AHO. The AHO was an attempt by city council to spur on the development of affordable housing by lowering barriers and removing restrictions to building 100% affordable housing units. Where "affordable" in this case meant that 100% of the units must be available and occupied by residents earning at least 100% or less of the local median income, hence the name 100% Affordable Housing. Additionally, 80% of those same units must be occupied by residents earning 80% or less of the local median income. If a developer were to meet these requirements, then the city would automatically grant them the right to build their housing developments more densely and taller than would normally be allowed. Not only that, but AHO projects are also not subject to planning board approval and only instead require non-binding advisory consultation from the planning board. Later, back when I was in the middle of making the last election video, the city council then passed a series of amendments to the Affordable Housing Overlay, which then became known as the AHO 2.0. These amendments, alongside a host of restriction eliminations, expanded the "by right" height, that is, the maximum height that developers are allowed to build without the need of any approval or permitting from the planning board, of AHO developments up to 12 stories among major corridors and roads across the entire city. In Central, Harvard, and Porter Squares, it actually was allowed development of up to 15 stories. However, in 2024, the city council set its sight on something far more ambitious and groundbreaking than the Affordable Housing Overlay. It went for the big guns. On May 13th, 2024, the Cambridge City Council passed Councillor Siddiqui and Azim's Policy Order 2024 Number 62, which directed the Community Development Department, the Department of the City of Cambridge, to begin studying on how the city could potentially update the zoning code to allow for multifamily housing to be built citywide. Three months later, on August 21st, the CDD came back with the following proposal: One, that all residential use types are now available everywhere. That is, the formerly single-family housing zones would all be absorbed into one singular residential zone that allowed for multifamily housing developments. Two, that all residential buildings in Cambridge are now able to build up to six floors by right. And at three, planning board permits are now only required for residential developments of 75,000 or more square feet. It's important to note that this proposal didn't impact a number of other city-level requirements for housing, most notably its inclusionary housing requirement, which stipulated that developments that either had 10 or more units or were 10,000 square feet and over in size to require 20% of their units to be affordable to low- and moderate-income households. On September 9th, the city council unanimously adopted the report and tasked the CDD to create a draft update of the zoning law with the six-floor citywide limit. However, at the behest of councillors Nolan, Toner, and Wilson, the CDD was also tasked to explore multiple other potential counter-proposals. The draft zoning law that the CDD made is what would ultimately become Ordinance Number One, and was first shown to the city council on September 30th. During the session, in one of her first actions as a sitting councillor, Kathy Zouzi attempted to table the ordinance and prevent any further movement on it, a move that was supported by councillors Nolan, Toner, and Simmons, but ultimately did not pass. Zouzi was then the sole opposing voice when the council voted to advance the ordinance to public consideration. And now, while I don't have much documentation on how that public deliberation and comment period went, I can only assume it was a... a little complex! Because when the ordinance committee met on December 19th, a series of amendments were made to Ordinance One, forming it into a weaker but supposedly more palatable compromise version. The most notable change in this version was a modification to the by-right housing limit. Instead of six floors by right, all housing developments now had a four-floor by right limit, with an additional two floors allowed for developments following the 20% inclusionary housing requirement. This would eventually come to be known as the 4+2 Plan. Additional amendments to Ordinance One included: a re-addition of a five-foot side and rear minimum setback for all developments except for townhouses; requiring developments greater than four floors to have a minimum lot size of 5,000 square feet; formalizing a five-year review process of multifamily housing; and that the Affordable Housing Overlay developments could now go universally up to nine floors. However, like most things in Cambridge politics, the 4+2 Plan wasn't without its detractors. Councillor Wilson instead made a counterproposal to amend the ordinance to instead have a lower base adwell zoning height of three floors, with the bonus for inclusionary housing being an additional three floors. This amendment, which would come to be known as the 3+3 Plan, ultimately failed in a 5-4 vote in the council. But calls to remove the 3+3 continue throughout the rest of the ordinance's time in committee. Happy New Year! On January 16th, 2025, the CDD came back with new projections on what the different multifamily housing proposals would look like for the city, as well as how many potential units the new zoning would create by both 2030 and 2040. The CDD's report ultimately determined, in a shocker, that 4+2 and 3+3 would both develop less housing than the original six-floor by-right ordinance. However, in the current version, with the additional compromise amendments added, 4+2 was marginally better than 3+3 by developing more housing overall, while having about equal amounts of affordable housing. Now, did these numbers settle the 4+2 versus 3+3 debate? Are you kidding me? Of course it didn't! 4+2 supporters pointed to the report to show that it was a happy medium between a six-floor proposal that everyone had kind of tacitly but quietly admitted would not pass and a 3+3 proposal, which would build less units and therefore be less effective. 3+3 proponents claimed that it was going to build more affordable housing, even though it objectively didn't under the current lot requirements? Although I guess there was some kind of hope that with the weird centrist socialist coalition of support behind 3+3, that the lot minimums could be removed somehow? Uh, I don't entirely remember. At the next city council meeting on January 27th, 2025, a report from City Manager Yi An Huang reported to City Council that new members were to be appointed to the Transit Advisory Committee, and one of those new members was me. Did anyone pay attention to that? Of course they didn't! Because that city council meeting was also the first vote on the final draft of Ordinance Number One, which of course dominated a multi-hour public comment period. I would remember, because I was listening to the entire thing. Proponents of both 4+2 and 3+3 came to their side's defense, while homeowners decry that the ordinance even existed, and many tired folks just simply wanted something to pass at night. In spite of a last-ditch attempt to advance 3+3 instead, which once again failed on a 5-4 split, Ordinance Number One was advanced to a final vote on February 10th, where it finally was ordained into law in an 8-1 vote. So, what comes next? Now that there's government support for affordable housing and multifamily housing that can be built everywhere in Cambridge, what are the next steps to making housing in Cambridge more affordable? What will the next two years hold? Well, there are a couple of avenues that the next city council may be able to explore. In my mind, what will probably be the next major zoning fight in city council is what to do with the corridors and squares. This year, city staff released the Mass Ave Planning Study, a year-long study into how the city could transform the parts of Mass Ave north of Harvard into a much more livable and vibrant destination, rather than a road that people just drive through. Perhaps the city could take action on the findings from that report. Or, alternatively, the city could re-evaluate its long-stalled plans for Cambridge Street. Or even the city could finally go back and re-explore zoning changes to Central Square, something that practically every candidate has discussed, but nobody seems willing to tackle. Alternatively, the city might begin to evaluate better programs for social housing or other means of financially supporting low-income individuals with their housing needs. And let's of course not forget that whoever the next city council is, they will have to constantly defend attacks on the city's affordable and inclusive housing plan from homeowners and anti-development preservationists. The city has made many strides in attempting to fix its housing and cost-of-living crisis, but just because the AHO and multifamily housing are the laws of the land right now doesn't mean that the fight is over or that there aren't individuals and organizations seeking to dismantle that work as much as they can. When considering who you're voting for, really think about how much you want to protect, preserve, and continue the work done by the council, and how that might affect your own living conditions years down the line. Now of that background information, let's take a bit of a look into where the candidates stand on some of the issues and topics related to housing. For most of these, I based these on answers given to the A Better Cambridge questionnaire, as well as from the "What's That About?" interviews of all the challengers. I would have also factored in answers from the Cambridge Citizens Coalition questionnaires. However, in their infinite wisdom and willingness to actually engage with, you know, citizens of Cambridge, they have decided not to publish any of the actual answers to the questionnaires. Question one: Do you support the recent multifamily housing zoning change? I don't think the answers here are necessarily shocking, although I will point out a few things. I place Alzubi, Nolan, Wilson, and Sabrina Wheeler in the softiest category for their repeated support of 3+3. I don't think any of them are opposed to multifamily housing in general, but support for what I feel to be a weaker form of the ordinance puts them down here. I put Rifkin in soft no for what was an interestingly problematic stance on multifamily housing? One thing about Rifkin is that in reading his responses to questions on housing, it becomes very, very clear that he basically opposes all development if it's not inclusionary, stating that he opposes the zoning as passed and would have wished to see stricter requirements on affordable housing he put in place. He then goes on to state that parking and setbacks should be decided on a neighborhood basis, once again adding additional restrictions on how housing can be built to the city. Which, let me make this clear, Rifkin has just stated in a city with not enough housing and where it's already difficult to build, he wants to make it more difficult for developers to build housing while also demanding that they make less doing it. And look, I understand that there is a sentiment among many of you that housing is a human right and that it shouldn't matter if housing developments lose money because housing shouldn't be viewed as a commodity or an investment. And I can sympathize with that viewpoint. I kind of agree. But it's not the world we live in! And if you're gonna stamp your foot in the ground and demand that developers build more and make less, they're ultimately not going to build anything at all! And you've just ended up hurting the people you're trying to help out the most. So anyways, yeah, that's why he's here. Moving on. Question two: Is historical preservation or development more important? Again, not really any shockers here. Both Rifkin and Alzubi I've placed down here once again for their supposed opposition to development on left-wing principles. With the kicker being Rifkin saying that the Historical Commission and Neighborhood Conservation Districts are achieving the "right balance" in terms of preservation and change. Another answer worth highlighting here is that of current councillor Ayesha Wilson, who when asked about what the city could be doing to strike the right balance between preserving the people and its buildings, said, quote, "I think having a committee meeting on this topic would be helpful." And listen, I think we can all agree that we love public community outreach here, can't get enough of it. But with all due respect, councillor, you are an elected public official running for reelection. As a voter, I would really like to see, you know, policies, ideas, thoughts beyond, "let's just keep asking and hope someone else solves it for us"? What do you think? What do you believe in? Question three: Do you support upzoning on corridors and major squares? This one was a bit of a tough nut to crack because pretty much everyone says that they support upzoning on corridors and major squares. But one, if I accepted every candidate at their word and not their actions, this chart and video would be useless. And two, we all know that for some candidates, that is just a flat-out lie. So for this chart, take it with a little grain of salt as I've really had to read into candidates' responses and interpretate their actual feelings. But I think I've got it pretty good here. Some responses that caught my eye were Bullister's and Melanson's answers on Cambridge Street and Mass Ave zoning, both stating that the plans don't go far enough and that the city could probably build taller than the 10 to 12 stories planned for each corridor. And Flaherty's response claiming that he supports "increase corridor density and promote transit housing in squares where MBTA stations are located", before immediately also saying that Porter Square, quote, "cannot sustain development of up to 18 stories", with his source being, "I grew up 10 blocks away." Question four: Do you support the Affordable Housing Overlay? Okay, for real this time, no surprising answers here. Generally strong support or opposition to the AHO, with Nolan and Flaherty attempting to find whatever middle ground might exist here. And from all of those questions, I've compiled what I feel to be a tier list of each candidate's overall support for affordable housing. So if the cost-of-living crisis is your biggest issue this election cycle, I highly encourage you to go vote for these candidates. And that about wraps it up on housing. Onto the next big issue dominating the conversations. Again, you know it, you love it, it's bike lanes. Cambridge's history with bike lanes and bicycle infrastructure has been a rather tumultuous one. To make a very long story short, and to also make this video a little shorter, pretty much everything regarding bike lanes in Cambridge has to do with three core documents, those being: Vision Zero, a declaration that the city seeks to eliminate fatalities and serious injuries on the road; the 2020 Bicycle Network Vision, a generalized and widespread plan for creating a larger bicycle network throughout Cambridge; and a Cycling Safety Ordinance, or CSO, the city's vehicle towards accomplishing many of the goals outlined in both plans. Of those three, the Cycling Safety Ordinance is the most concrete policy of the three, and by extension, the one that has had the most lively discussion regarding its implementation. Passed in April 2019, the original CSO required that when the city rebuilt a road that had a bike lane planned in the Bicycle Network Vision, it also had to build the bike lane as a part of that reconstruction. A further set of amendments in 2020 tacked on a fast track towards building 25 miles of separated bike lanes on a couple of major corridors in the city, those being: all of Mass Ave, Broadway from Harvard to Kendall, Cambridge Street from Inman to Leechmere, Hampshire Street from Inman to Kendall, Garden Street, and the squares such as Inman, Kendall, Leechmere, Harvard, et cetera. And all of these bike lanes had a set completion date: May 1st, 2026. And unlike all the kerfuffle over housing, everyone agreed on the ordinance and worked hard towards its... Nah, you know I'm kidding. The Cycling Safety Ordinance has possibly been one of the most contentious and challenged pieces of legislature to come out of Cambridge City Council. And to show that, here is a brief history of every time someone's tried to block some or all of the CSO. April 15th, 2022, Policy Order 2022 Number 67 attempted to delay Mass Ave bike lanes until the overhead catenary wires for the old MBTA trolley buses were removed. Failed on a 3-6 vote. Same day, Policy Order 2022 Number 70 attempted to block the construction of quick-build bike lanes in Porter Square, instead mandating that Porter would only get bike lanes when Mass Ave was reconstructed. instead mandating that Porter would only get bike lanes when Mass Ave was reconstructed as a part of the Mass Ave 4 project. As a note, the Mass Ave 4 project is a comprehensive redesign of the entirety of Massachusetts Avenue from Cambridge Common to the Elwaybrook Parkway and the border of Arlington. It's important to note that construction on the project, which if this policy order had passed would have included Porter Square, is set to complete next year, which meant that this policy order was effectively a delay of bike lanes on Porter Square for four years. Of course this one failed. Moving on. June 10th, 2022, Cambridge Streets for All, an organization which included former councillor Pickett and current councillor candidate Hanrady, filed an injunction to halt all construction of new bike lanes in the city, which was denied. Middlesex County Superior Court Judge John Papas denied the injunction on June 30th, 2022, specifically noting harm to the plaintiffs is, quote, "speculative and not supportive by evidence". In reaction to the decision, owner Lee Jenkins of Violet Bakers on Mass Ave implied that the decision was as bad as the Supreme Court overturning Roe v. Wade. August 2nd, 2022, another CSA lawsuit filed to overturn the CSO, which was also denied. Judge Maureen Hogan dismissed the lawsuit on February 6th, 2024. What? Well, I mean, speaking of 2024, we'll do a little bit of a time skip. Nothing really important happens here except, oh, right, a new city council election. Joan Pickett, who is the chair of Cambridge Streets for All, which has attempted to sue the city twice at this point, wins a seat on city council. That surely, alright, right? Well... April 30th, 2024, Policy Order 2024 Number 50 attempts to extend the deadline for quick-build bike lanes on Cambridge Street, Main Street, and Broadway until November 1st, 2027. And it passes in a narrow 5-4 vote, which saw self-proclaimed, quote, "tireless advocate for climate action", end quote, councillor Patty Nolan be the deciding vote in sending some of the most crucial bike lanes in Cambridge into the delay purgatory. Luckily for bike lane advocates, the policy order was eventually amended by councillor McGovern to be a November 30th, 2026 deadline instead. And then, April 7th, 2025, Policy Order 2025 Number 47 directed the city to reopen Garden Street to two-way traffic. And while this isn't necessarily a delay of the Cycling Safety Ordinance, I think this one requires a little bit of discussion to maybe show the extent to which anti-bike advocates are willing to go. Garden Street is a road in Neighborhood 9, running from Mass Ave and Cambridge Common all the way up to Denahi Park. As a part of the Cycling Safety Ordinance, separated bike lanes needed to be installed on Garden Street in 2022. And through a series of multiple community meetings, residents in the neighborhood actually came up with the suggestion of converting Garden Street from two ways to one way. This was the path that would install the bike lanes while also preserving the most parking spots, an actual win for community engagement. And in 2023, the city released a report analyzing the impact of the one-way transformation. City staff noted the marginal impact to traffic volumes on surrounding street and the infeasibility of a move back to two-way traffic, mainly due to the fact that doing so would eliminate pretty much all parking on Garden Street, which was the whole point of doing one way in the first place. And yet, in stunning fashion, councillors Toner, Nolan, Wilson, Zoucy, and Simmons went against the expert advice of city staff and overwhelming public testimony in favor of a one-way Garden Street, and successfully passed the policy order, sending it back to two-way traffic. Absolutely incredible governance. Moving right along into the most recent attempted delays of the Cycling Safety Ordinance, which were on June 16th, 2025. Policy Order 2025 Number 88 required study of parking utilization and alternatives before building bike lanes on Broadway. This one failed in a close 5-4 vote, but was followed up immediately by the more damaging Policy Order 2025 Number 89, which would have just stopped bike lanes on Broadway entirely. Luckily, this one also failed on a 6-3 vote, with councillor Zoucy surprisingly voting in favor of keeping Broadway bike lanes. And that concludes a brief history of the Cycling Safety Ordinance. As for the future of bike lanes in Cambridge, for those of you who've been paying attention, you may remember that the CSO's quick-build lanes have a set end date: November 30th of 2026. And as nebulous as that date might seem, granted there aren't any further successful delays of the CSO, that date is quickly approaching. The real question then becomes, what comes after? One particular topic of discussion amongst the candidates has been about a second phase of the Cycling Safety Ordinance, a CSO 2.0 if you would, that focuses more on building out the vertical north-south connections of the network. For example, most of the bike lanes currently being built as a part of the Cycling Safety Ordinance right now are east-west routes, roads like Mass Ave, Broadway, and Cambridge Street. But with the exception of Hampshire Street, there really aren't any good separate bike lane connections between those three. But there are many places where new separated lanes could be built. The possibilities are wide open for what the next council could do on the topic of bike lanes. So remember that when considering who to vote for. Now that that's done, let's get back to seeing where all the candidates stand on the issues regarding bike lanes, transit, and cycling infrastructure. Answers to this section are largely derived from the answers to Cambridge Bike Safety questionnaire, the "What's That About?" interviews, or for those who didn't answer any bike-related questionnaire, historical actions, their website, and once again, vibes. So without further ado. Question 1: Do you support completing the Cycling Safety Ordinance? A pretty widespread here, with many candidates giving full support to the CSO and committed to its full completion by the November 2026 deadline. Sue is also committed to the CSO's completion, but at various answers indicating wanting to take a more cautious and slower approach. While Nolan has been vocally for bicycle infrastructure, but has frequently and repeatedly voted against bike lanes, most notably in the vote to delay the CSO's completion to November. Perhaps the one I should comment on the most here is Simmons, who, in my haste to make the 2023 election video, I'd accidentally mischaracterized as a bike lane supporter. Well, as it turns out, she's actually the most steadfast opponent of bike lane infrastructure and has been for years, so uh, oops. Of course, she would never admit this herself, but the track record of voting for every possible delay of the Cycling Safety Ordinance is good enough evidence for anybody. Question 2: Do you support building more bike lanes after the CSO is finished? No surprises here either. I will comment that if I took Flaherty at his word, specifically, he would have fallen into the soft no category. But that was largely due to the fact that he chose to answer almost all questions regarding future expansion of the bike lane network with the inspiring words, "Without a detailed plan, it is impossible to opine", which is truly a sentiment you really wish to see in candidates these days. You know, non-committal cowardice. How dare you ask if he actually has opinions and stances on the core and critical issues of the time? How dare you? Question 3: Do you support Garden Street returning to two-way traffic? Also a largely unsurprising page, I think the only person who's worth talking about here is Sharon, who I think admitted that they thought the original design was flawed, but opposed returning Garden Street to two-way traffic for two reasons. 1, most residents of Garden Street oppose the reversal, and 2, having the entire road be reconstructed again so soon would be a nuisance to residents. Question 4: Do you support redesigning Memorial Drive? Do you support continuing to close Memorial near Riverbend Park on weekends? This is one that will require a little bit of additional context. Memorial Drive is a large parkway running alongside the banks of the Charles River, while Riverbend Park is an informal name for the series of public parks and green spaces on the riverside, from Jerry's Landing to Western Ave. Since the 1970s, sections of Memorial Drive alongside Riverbend Park have been closed at cars on Sundays from April to November, allowing for greater public access to the river by opening the road for pedestrians and cyclists to use. During the pandemic, this closure was also extended to Saturdays as well, but that ended back in 2022. Recently, there have been greater calls to redesign Memorial Drive by adding traffic calming measures, cutting lanes, and dropping the speed limit to 25 miles per hour. These calls have largely been amplified due to the high-profile death of 62-year-old John Corcoran on Memorial Drive in September of last year. And you may be wondering, well, why hasn't the city done anything about Memorial Drive? And the long and short of it is that they just can't. Just like the Fresh Pond and Elwaybrook Parkways in the West, Memorial Drive is owned by the Massachusetts Department of Conservation and Recreation, a state agency who is not beholden to the Cambridge City Council. That's why memorial closures on Saturday ended. DCR felt they weren't necessary anymore and ended the program, despite the requests of Cambridge City Council. So when I showed this diagram, keep in mind that while the best any councillor will be able to do is ask DCR pretty please when it comes to changes to Memorial Drive, their take on this is not only a good indicator of their personal support for bicyclists and bike infrastructure in the city, but also their continued pressure on the topic may actually push DCR to do something in the future. And that's pretty much it for the core issues of this election. Of course, there are many other issues that the candidates would like to talk about: public safety, the environment, city taxes, etc. But I think these two, housing and bike lanes, are the real wedge issues that I think are going to motivate a lot of voters in terms of who they decide to support, or even if they decide to vote at all. Speaking of the voters, if all you wanted from this video was just the informational bits, this video is pretty much done. Jump to this time in the video if you want to learn more about how to register to vote, where to vote, and when to vote. But for the rest of you still watching, let's talk a little bit about what this voter thinks about the election. Well, let's get the easy ones out of the way. For incumbents, I'm going to recommend you vote for Burhan Azim, Mark McGovern, Sumbol Siddiqui, and Jevon Sabrina Wheeler. These four have been consistent in their support of pro-housing and pro-bicycle policies, and I definitely will be ranking them on my ballot this year. One thing I want to point out is that for Azim and Siddiqui, both of them were the original sponsors of the 6-4 plan, and despite pushback from many sides, persevered to get the landmark multifamily housing ordinance passed. And I think they really deserve a lot of credit for that. For McGovern and Sabrina Wheeler, I don't really have much to add except that both of them decided to write me small personal messages on my election pamphlets, and I thought that was awesome. Moving on to the challengers, I strongly recommend that you vote for these two candidates. Dana Bullister is probably my number one for this election cycle. I think she has a really impressive series of policies. Her answers to the questionnaires and interviews were very detailed and nuanced, and I really appreciate her data-driven approach to solving many of the city's issues. One of her core policy points is the introduction of land value tax, which while I do not have nearly enough time or resources to properly explain here, is perhaps one of the most groundbreaking proposals to come out of any city council candidate this election. I really hope she makes it, and I highly encourage those who are strongly pro-bike and pro-housing to support her campaign. Ned Melanson is another one of my strong recommendations for you to vote for. I found his answers in questionnaires, interviews, and other public engagement has shown that he has put a lot of thought and consideration into this run. He was also one of the only candidates to really put an emphasis on disability-accessibility improvements, which is something I personally feel quite strongly about. As for people I have soft support for, I have Aya Alzubi. She has really sharpened her campaigning skills a lot from 2023, and I think it's made a version of our campaign that's a lot more focused and better engaged and palatable to the general electorate. I definitely think she's trying to tap into that same energy that Zohran captured with his win in the New York City mayoral primary. However, I don't think I'll be personally voting for Alzubi this cycle. I still have issues with her anti-development stance on commercial and market-rate housing, but I could fully sympathize and understand other people's reasons for voting for her. And I don't think I'd be up in arms if she were to make the council. Well, there's quite a few here, but let me get the real quick ones out of the way first, and then cover some of the more lengthy takes from there. Elizabeth Biziyo has got to be perhaps one of the most absent people in this entire campaign. Except for the one "What's That About?" interview with all the challengers, she has answered a grand total of zero questionnaires that were publicly accessible, her policy page is paper-thin, and even when she did answer questions, they were lackluster at best. I haven't given her much thought this election, and I really don't think you should either. John Hanrady has not changed at all since 2023. He's purely an obstructionist candidate who brings nothing new, novel, or constructive in terms of policy to the table. His only role is to be against any of the progress that the city has made in the last five years, and his addition to the council would be nothing short of a disaster. Zion Sharon also really doesn't seem to be bringing anything interesting to the table except for parroting the rhetoric of the CCC in regards to housing and being a centrist on bike lanes. He seems to be trying to aim for the inoffensive centrist path, which has worked for candidates before, but unlike Nolan or Wilson, he has no other compelling reasons for you to vote for him. I hesitate to say that a vote is ever wasted, but honestly, even if you are a CCC voter, I think there are far more interesting and competent candidates for you to vote for. And then there's Peter Sue, who returns to us from the 2023 campaign in which he came second to last. His campaigning in 2023 was completely lackluster, and I was really curious to see if he'd improve on it in this revamped 2025 campaign. And, uh, eh. His messaging is still pretty muddled and vague, all wrapped in this banner of "non-ideological, health-focused planning". From what I can gather, he seems soft on support for bike lanes and falls closer towards the CCC on housing, and it's not really a winning combination for me, or for other voters apparently. Now onto the challengers that I have a few stronger opinions on. Timothy Flaherty really wants this seat. He's poured thousands of dollars into this campaign, having raised almost $100,000, which is over 2.5 times more than the next highest candidate. Note however, that only 30% of those donations come from within Cambridge itself, which is the lowest percentage amongst all the candidates. And frankly, I think it's worth taking him down a few pegs. First of all, let's finally talk about councillor Paul Toner. In March 2025, Toner was issued criminal charges for soliciting the services of a high-end illegal brothel network in Cambridge. While he claims innocence, he was summarily removed from all of his committee chairmanships by Mayor Simmons and faced numerous calls to resign, which he didn't. Now while his court case has yet to resolve, I can't say whether or not he's actually guilty, but what I can say is that Toner's lawyer in all of this, a lawyer who advised Toner not to resign, is our good friend Tim. And speaking of being a lawyer, did you know that in May of 2015, Timothy Flaherty was indicted on federal witness tampering charges by offering money to the victim of a hate crime to not testify? Didn't you know that Tim pled guilty in state court and was prevented from practicing law for a full year? No? Here's the US District Attorney's Office press release on that very incident. "But okay", you may be saying, "character issues aren't important to me at all. What matters is the policy." Okay then, let me introduce you to the one line that I think defines Flaherty's entire campaign: "I have no specific policy proposals at this time." In both the ABC and CBS questionnaires, he definitely dodged having to commit to anything in the future, citing the lack of plans and the impossibility of having to "opine on the future", as if having an opinion on things was simply too much for his brain to conceive. And in places where he did answer questions, he has shown himself to be an obstructionist in transit and housing in every way, opposing corridor upzoning, bike lanes, and any other kind of meaningful change to the city. There's often been a joke amongst Cambridge politicos that Flaherty is just running to be the second coming of Paul Toner. And while I find that funny, I don't think it's true. Flaherty is a well-funded and polished hand writing or picket, a complete blocker to any future progress in the city, and would be a total disaster if elected. And lastly, Stan Rifkin has, to put it mildly, baffled me throughout the research for this video. And while I have to emphasize that I think he's a well-intentioned and probably perfectly nice and fine person to talk to, Rifkin to me is the embodiment of almost every single pet peeve I have of left-wing elected officials put into one candidate. For example, 1, he's deeply antagonistic of the current existing city council, which I can understand, weren't enough for the fact that all the people he is calling failures are most likely to be his coworkers if he wins, which is not necessarily the greatest initial footing for getting meaningful legislation to happen. 2, he's adopted firm, hard-line stances on very socialist-aligned positions, particularly on housing. And let me make myself more clear. I think he makes really good points on the need for social housing and community land trusts, and I agree the city should be doing more on that front to construct housing of its own for its citizens. The problem I have is that he seems to make the argument that his solution is the only correct solution for us to take, and pursuing anything else like market-rate housing and private-public partnerships is somehow an objective moral failing of the city. And that's what I don't like, the no-compromise attitude. For an issue as large and critical as the housing crisis, we need to be firing on all cylinders. We do not have the luxury of being able to pick and choose which specific flavor or instrument we use to lower the cost of housing. And being so anti-other solutions will only lead to another long and protracted political battle, while the real results and real people continue to get left behind. It's a kind of leftism where I fear he has more interest in doing what he thinks is right over what will actually make us real progress sooner. And with all due respect, it's not even just that he's a hard-line stickler. He's also just a bad campaigner. His answers were wildly contradictory, full of bad optics and bad politics. A quick glance over his ABC questionnaire would almost make you think that he's against building new housing altogether. And do I think that's true? No, not necessarily. But he's doing a really bad job portraying himself as a reasonable, thoughtful, and electable candidate. I do really think he has good intentions, and he sometimes has good ideas. And if he ever signaled in a way that he was willing to moderate or consider compromise with an already very progressive council, I might vote for him, but he has not, and so I will not. Of the incumbents, Kathy Zoucy and Denise Simmons have been the largest opponents of affordable housing and bike lanes respectively. And I don't think their weak support on other issues really lends me great reason to vote for them over objectively better incumbents and challengers. For Patty Nolan, I really do think her heart is in the right place, but over these last few years, she's really tried to position herself as the candidate of few years, she's really tried to position herself as a candidate of compromise. And I really don't think it's worked out for her. She's needlessly antagonized most of her former allies and voters in the city, leading to an almost anemic level of support from all sides. Neither pro- or anti-bike or housing advocates know truly where she stands, or if she even has the fortitude to actually stand up for something rather than giving way to the slightest pressure. She's voted for and against bikes, she's voted for and against upzoning, and this election cycle, I really don't think that she has the votes or support left for her anymore. But hey, incumbency is a powerful thing, so maybe she'll manage to scrounge together the votes for a fourth term. All I know is that one of those votes won't be mine. And lastly, Ayesha Wilson. I remember being relatively supportive of her 2023 campaign, even though it was relatively light on policy. I will not be making that mistake again. She has been one of the greatest disappointments of my 2023 recommendations. Let's consider an example of what I mean. After the public comment period on the failed Broadway bike lane delay, in which after dozens of people had talked about their own experiences with losing a friend, a colleague, or significant other to a cycling accident, she criticized bike lane supporters by saying that she, quote, "despises the fact that we have this conversation as a matter of life or death." And then proceeded to dismiss those cyclist deaths as, quote, "accidents happen." Furthermore, in a questionnaire regarding the city's commitment to Vision Zero, councillor Wilson questioned whether Vision Zero was still necessary in a post-pandemic world, as if just because the plan was made before the pandemic, that makes it okay for people to die in the streets. Her callousness and heartless attitude to her own constituents in her last term is a sign of someone who has little to no care about human life or no understanding of the actual responsibility of government and the people that are at stake as a part of it. Frankly, councillor Wilson's behavior here would have probably been what I would have called the most shameful acts of this council cycle, or not for, you know, Paul Toner. Beyond that, her positions on housing aren't great. Three plus three at this point is a watering down of a watering down, and her lack of serious conviction to stand for any other policy position isn't too inspiring. In my opinion, she should not be reelected or ranked by voters at all in this election. She has shown through her actions that she really does not care about the actual citizens of Cambridge, and as a result, should never even come close to a council seat ever again. And that should pretty much cover about everyone. Of course, there is our merely my own opinions driven from my own beliefs and background. If you have differing opinions, like a candidate that I don't, hate a candidate that I love, that's totally understandable and respectable. You vote the way you want to, but for those undecided of you out there who support housing, who support better transit infrastructure, this should really give you a great at-glance view of who I think best supports your views and will actively fight for them in city council. And lastly, let's cover one important question. Why should I vote in the city council election? Because, and let's be entirely honest with ourselves, it's 2025, and we're debating the same topics that we did back in 2023 and 2021. Housing and bike lanes continue to and will continue to be core issues, and it doesn't seem like those last two elections or this one are going to come any closer to resolving for good how the city will operate in the coming future. And to that, I have to say, I kind of feel that this election is a little different. We've already seen this city probably push as far as it can on sweeping citywide zoning changes with multifamily housing, and we're quickly approaching the deadline for the construction of the CSO's quick-build bike lanes. Very soon, we are really going to have to start asking, what's next? What are the next plans, the next problems that the city is going to take on over the next five to 10 years? This is the city council that's going to decide that. As voters for this election cycle, we really need to ask ourselves, what is the Cambridge that we want to build for the future? Are we going to resign ourselves to the vision of Cambridge as just merely a suburb of Boston? One full of quiet, boring people, living in quiet, boring neighborhoods, full of houses that nobody can afford, and where nothing ever happens and nothing ever changes? Or do we vision a future of a vibrant, thriving, and dynamic Cambridge? One full of diversity, one full of energy, one full of the people who make communities and build the character and charm that we love so much? That is what is on the ballot this November, and that is why you should vote. Well, at a bare minimum, the next thing to do is to make sure you're registered to vote. The last day to register to vote is on Saturday, October 25th. You can do it online at www.ssec.state.ma.us/ovr, or in person at the Election Commission office at 689 Massachusetts Avenue. Election Day is on Tuesday, November 4th, just about one month from now. Although there are options for you to vote early, by mail or in person, you can read about those options as well as learn more about how voting in Cambridge works, view where you should vote, and view a sample ballot at the city's Election Commission page for the 2025 municipal election right here. And lastly, thank you very much for bearing with me and watching me ramble on about municipal politics once again. I truly love the fact that I get to live here, and helping you all stay informed about the people who will keep the city an incredible place to live is the least I can do to show them. And with that being said, thank you very much for watching. Don't forget to vote, and have a wonderful day.